Chair Silverman.
President. So, the next item on the agenda is public comment. This portion of public comment is designed to address things that are not on the agenda. And I believe Ms. Riofrio is here to address an item that is not on the agenda. So if you would please come forward to the microphone.
I have printed documents for the commissioners if they would like them.
Keep in mind that with public comment, you know, other than asking staff to follow up, there's not much that we're allowed to say.
I understand, thank you. And I also understand that I have two minutes.
Take it a little bit longer if you need it.
No, thanks, I'm ready. Thank you for letting me speak. I am here to make a public comment about a matter some members of this planning commission might recall from ten years on the residential design review committee in 2016. At the RDRC meeting on August 1st, 2016, the committee at the time approved building plans for 116 Wilshire Court, a double lot being split to build two new houses. Mr. Silverman had sat on the RDRC during an earlier phase of this application's progress. Among the conditions of approval for this project was one requiring that the maximum ridge height of Lot 3 be no more than 2 feet 6 inches higher than the finished floor of our home next door, 132 Wilshire Court. We followed up with the planner assigned to the project, Jill Lewis, to confirm in writing that this specific condition would have to be met. I have submitted that correspondence for your records, and I do have electronic copies too, if you'd like to add it to the record. Right now, over 13 months later, we are looking at the roof being finished for Lot 3. By our reckoning, it exceeds the 2 feet 6 inch condition by almost 2 additional feet. Weeks ago, when it became clear this was happening, we notified the builder on August 17th, and then the building department on August 21st, and finally, the planning department on September 1st of our concern. All of them pointed to a survey taken from the Lot 3 building's finished floor on July 13th, long before the roof went up, and told us there was nothing wrong. Finally, on September 11th, we received correspondence from the builder that confirmed that his idea of the measurements differed significantly from ours. In fact, his response includes both a measurement error and an acknowledgement that he exceeded his own conception of the measurements, which still exceed ours. I have submitted that correspondence for your records. This afternoon, city planner Lisa Porras confirmed that the surveyed measurement stands. She also said she was open to seeing the documents we have that indicate otherwise, and these are the ones that I am submitting. I close by saying, we are extremely unhappy with the current state of this situation and are looking for any shred of hope for a resolution that does not destroy our home. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your comments, and did you have copies of this for staff as well?
I gave her and I gave her the electronic copy, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, and I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment for an item that is not on the agenda? Seeing none, the next item on the agenda is 906 Holly Street, APN 046. I'm sorry?
Approved minutes.
Oh, thank you. Appreciate that. All right, so I messed up, and we need to approve the minutes? And I understand there's a change to the minutes, or there's a clarification?
I have a clarification, or perhaps an oversight, on page 5, or packet page 7, it says, of those minutes. There's a motion made by Commissioner Harper-Peterson, and a second, but no second is given in the minutes there. It was probably myself, but I can't remember exactly, but...
Well, seeing that, I mean, I don't know whether staff members, but seeing that Shannon voted no, presumably she did not second it.
Right.
So...
Never have.
And we can always verify with the recording as well, but...
Well, I think we probably... Shannon, did you second that motion?
I did not second that.
Okay, so then...
I believe I did.
Yeah, so then, it looks like we may have a motion to approve the agenda, actually the agenda, the minutes with that change, unless there are any other changes?
I move we accept with the change.
Okay. So, I just note for the, I mean, I wasn't here. I would note that I think technically, unless there's some bylaws that say something differently, I don't think a 2-1 is actually a passage, because I would assume that it requires three votes to pass anything, but that's, you know, up for interpretation by someone other than me. Is there a motion to approve the minutes with that addition?
I move we approve the minutes with that addition.
Is there a second?
A second.
Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Bergman?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
I'm abstaining, because I was at another meeting.
Vice Chair Bradley?
Yes.
Chair Silverman?
Yes. Okay, now, the public hearing. So, I'll briefly read the procedure for public hearing. Staff will present a report on the history, physical features, et cetera, on the application, followed with the staff's recommendations. The applicant will make a presentation. Thereafter, interested members of the committee may speak on their proposal. When all interested parties have had an opportunity to be heard, the hearing will be closed, and no further discussion from the floor can be held. The commission will then consider the evidence and make its recommendation. If you challenge a public hearing item in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing, described in this notice, the public notice, or written correspondence delivered to the city or prior to the public hearing. Speakers should fill out, well, we ask the speakers fill out a speaker's form found by the door and hand it to the recording secretary prior to addressing the commission. The speaker should come up to the microphone and speak. Since the meeting is being recorded, this will assist staff in preparing the minutes. And the first item is 906 Holly Street.
Thank you, good evening. The item before you at 906 Holly is consideration of a grading and dirt haul certificate to implement the soil and remediation plan. This item was continued from your last meeting. The site is located at the northwest corner of Holly Street Industrial Road, is the site of an existing service station. The zoning is NR Neighborhood Retail. A leak was detected from an underground petroleum storage tank in 1986, and the property owner, I believe, is working on a soil and remediation plan that's been approved by San Mateo County Department of Environmental Health. Too far, there we go. The grading and dirt haul to implement the soil and remediation plan is outlined in that shaded area. That's the area of the excavation. The applicant proposes to remove 974 cubic yards of soil. This is with an excavation depth of approximately 8 feet over an area of 3,200 square feet portion of the property. The station will remain operational during the grading activities. Due to the constraints on the use of Holly Street west of Industrial Road, the applicant has worked with the city's Public Works Department on traffic control plan that includes the closure of the sidewalk and one traveling along Industrial Road to accommodate the grading activities. And I've highlighted that area on the screen where Public Works will approve traffic control plan to close that area for the grading operations. It is estimated that 171 truckloads and 3 months will be the total timeline to complete the grading and the fill operations. They also will need to remove the sign that is at the corner, and they will replace it exactly as it existed before the removal. To access the site, they'll be exiting Highway 101, taking westbound Ralston to Old County Road, Harbor Boulevard, and then Industrial Road, and then, as they indicated, stage along the property frontage for loading and unloading. And then, when they exit the site, they'll take southbound Industrial Road to Britton Avenue to U Highway 101. The project has been determined to be exempt from CEQA, which allows minor alterations to land, including grading from further environmental review. The applicant mailed project information to property owners and occupants within 300 feet of the site in mid-August, and then the city mailed notice on August 24th, as well as published in the newspaper August 25th, and I have not received any comments since the public notification. Here's the motion, and I'd be happy to try to answer any of your questions. The applicant is also here this evening and can give a brief presentation or simply answer your questions.
I don't know whether my questions are for you or for them, but you can tell me. How long is that? So, that's the, when you're coming towards Highway 101 on Holly, the lane that's being closed is the lane that you would turn right into when you are turning onto Industrial?
If you were traveling southbound on Industrial and you wanted to turn right onto Holly.
You're turning south...
Turning southbound on Industrial.
So, in front of the 76 station?
That's exactly the project site, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And how long is that lane going to be closed?
The total duration of the project is estimated 3 months, but I can have the applicant maybe give more and more details on that for you.
Okay.
And the closure times, I believe, is limited to 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM.
What about other, I don't know what's active right now. We don't have any trucks being, or any haul routes for the project, the big project that we approved, that hasn't even applied for a permit, right? Yet to break ground?
The Windy Hill Development?
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, it's in Plan Check, so this should be completed by then.
That's already coordinated, basically.
Right, and the other grading project on Branston is going to be using Britton for access, and not the north.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? Does the applicant have a presentation?
So, the lane, the whole project would be possibly 3 months. The lane closure, I would estimate at less than 2 months.
Okay, and your plan is to, is to close the lane from what time to what time every day?
9 to 4.
So, it will not be closed before 9, and it will not be closed after 4?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is, and maybe this is for staff, I mean, is there, is there any outreach that's intended to, you know, notify folks that? I don't come in that direction very often. I don't know how bad the traffic is, but I'm just trying to think, you know, so you're basically turning, so... You're turning on, at that point of the day, can there be cars on the north side of Holly? Are they allowed?
Yes.
You know how one of the lanes gets closed?
Yeah, no, it'll, it would be, you would have the 2 lanes on Holly at that time, but it's really, you're just eliminating that second through lane on the northbound, excuse me, southbound Industrial.
Yeah, I'm sorry, was there any...
And we can have as a requirement that there be kind of one of those electronic reader boards just to alert commuters. I mean, yes, will there be outreach to the adjacent property and business owners, but I think your concern more is for commuters that travel that route. So, there would be an opportunity to have an electronic reader board to alert people, you know, a few days prior that that lane would be temporarily closed.
I mean, my concern is really just, I know that that portion of Holly, the traffic, is terrible. Now, I don't, I don't drive it during that portion of the day. I mean, was, were there any studies that were done about the amount of traffic during that time? You know, looking at traffic patterns, see what was happening, to have some sense of how this is going to affect the traffic patterns?
That's southbound Industrial lane, and there's still the additional through lane that's left. It's not the Holly traffic that would be impacted, it's really the southbound Industrial traffic.
No, I hear you.
And so, the intent is to keep it off peak hours, and I know the applicant really worked with Public Works to try to find a creative solution, because we cannot use that segment of Holly Street. So, they were looking at, you know, any other ways to try to make this work, and given the location of the grading, this was really the best solution that was arrived at by the Public Works Department.
And did Public Works do any, I mean, did they actually go out during these times and look at traffic flows to see what was going on during this time, to get a sense of how this is going to impact things?
I don't know what outreach they did, but I know the traffic engineer that's very familiar with that intersection is working on plans for that intersection right now, is the one that came up with the concept.
I don't see why it's not the same as the HOV restrictions. I mean, that's like 10 to 4 when things are, I mean, 9 is like right at peak, right?
HOV restrictions to where on the highway?
Like our full lanes.
Very cool, sorry, I didn't mean that, but, you know, we have the, you know, you have all the, you know, basically, you can't drive in the left-hand lane, and there's metering all the way up till 10, right? So, my question is, is why wouldn't we just match what is already in existence and do it at 10 instead of at 9? Because 9 is right at peak. Why would we put the, why wouldn't we keep it open to everyone until 10 o'clock instead of 9?
Why, I just wanted to know whether the city had studied it. I don't come from that direction. I can tell you, traveling on Industrial, going north, anytime near commute time, it can take 3 lights to get through Holly. And so, now, there is only 1 lane going straight. You know, I get that, but it is already a mess. Now, if it were the same going the other way, and you went from 2 lanes to 1 lane, it would be a major problem. If you took, if you took away half the lane, or there'd be, you'd only have half a lane so no one could drive in it, but if you, if you took away half a lane, you know, going north on Holly, anytime near the commute time, it would be a complete and total disaster. So, that's, that was my, I don't know if I have a point, but if I did, that was my point. Does anyone else have any questions?
No further questions from me.
Any questions from anyone? Staff will deal with all of the complaining people and say, you know, hey, we, we studied this enough, and we knew this wasn't going to be a problem, and we told the planning commission it wasn't going to be a problem. Is that what you're telling me?
But also to clarify, you're putting on parameters, and the Public Works Department has the ability to further restrict that, because they do still need to issue a permit. They do need to issue the street closure permit as well. So, if Public Works sees that this is not working, it's too much of a congested area at that hour of the day, they can shift it. They do have the ability to do that.
Where?
In their authority, as the permit issuer.
But we're...
They can further restrict it if they see it's an issue. And if you want to add that as wording, you can, but they legally have that ability to do so. You're not approving that sidewalk lane closure, that's not under your authority.
Oh, okay.
That would be the encroachment permit.
Okay. All right. That's, that's good to know. All right, thank you. All right. A motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Bergman?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bradley?
Yes.
Chair Silverman?
Yes. All right, you want to put the motion back on there? Anybody want to make that motion, or is there any discussion?
I move that the planning commission grant approval of the request for grading and dirt haul certificate to implement the soil and remediation plan at 906 Holly Street, APN 046-111-280, based on the findings and for the reasons incorporated in the staff report and as conditioned in the draft grading and dirt haul certificate.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in, oh, can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Bergman?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bradley?
Yes.
Chair Silverman?
Yes. All right, moving on to 360 Industrial Road, the same rules for public hearing that I read earlier still apply?
Thank you, good evening. I'm Laura Russell, senior planner. The application before you is for a conditional use permit for a commercial recreation use called Love to Play at 360 Industrial Suite A, and that is next to Orchard Supply Hardware. So, here's the proposed location on the screen, in the Google map and in the zoning map. It's an existing tenant space of about 8,500 square, 8,500 square feet. It's located on the west side of the building. The Google map is just a little bit outdated in that it still shows a building in the middle that was demolished for parking, which that is accurately reflected. It is accurately reflected in your plans, and you're probably familiar with it in the field as well. The zoning is IL for light industrial, and a residential neighborhood is located directly to the west. The applicant is proposing a large-scale commercial recreation business, which requires a conditional use permit in the light industrial district. The business includes indoor play areas for kids, areas for birthday parties, and a small cafe for customers. The hours of operation are proposed to be Monday through Saturday from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM, and Sunday from 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Deliveries would be by small vans or truck, or small trucks only, and those deliveries would occur through the front door. Through the, per the conditions of approval as drafted, the delivery hours would be the same as the Orchard Supply. So, the site plan shows where the proposed business would be located. It's between the Orchard retail area, which is on the right, and the Orchard loading dock and storage area, which is on the left. The overall site improvements were made as part of the Orchard project, and a master sign program is in effect for the overall site, which was approved by the planning commission. There are 219 parking spaces currently on site. The existing uses require 125 parking spaces, so there's significant excess parking available. There are just 2 small aspects of the project that would affect the exterior. There's no design review application required, since all of the other changes to the exterior were made as part of the tenant improvements and the improvements to the site. The first small change is the applicant is proposing just a few small tables and chairs for customers that would be located in the walkway in front of the storefront. I just highlighted that in yellow here for you to see where those might be located. And number 2, a small iron fence would be installed to direct customers towards the pedestrian walkway, so that they wouldn't cut through the landscaping and cross over in front of the Orchard loading dock. This would kind of, you know, reduce the impact of any possible safety implications of kids coming out of the storefront, make sure they're moving in the right direction out towards the parking area. The applicant invited all property owners within 300 feet of the site to a neighborhood meeting. There were no residents in attendance at that meeting. They also hand-delivered notices to the houses that are immediately adjacent to the site. They did not receive any concerns. They did receive one email that just wanted to make sure that employees would not be allowed to congregate or smoke out by the fence, and that's an old issue that came up before Orchard Supply even applied for their project. So, just kind of a reminder about that, and some positive comments about the business. And I'm sure that the applicant could elaborate on that, if you would like, but we, the staff, have not received any comments or questions on the project. I was at the neighborhood meeting, we didn't hear anything there, no folks there, and we didn't get anything back from the public notice.
Surprising.
So, if the planning commission wishes to approve the project this evening, here's the motion. I'd be happy to answer any questions. The applicant, his architect, and the property ownership representative are here this evening as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for staff at this time?
None, for me.
All right, does the applicant have a presentation?
Good evening. My name is Benick Chow, and what I like to do is open a business in, at the 360 Industrial. It's called Love to Play. Basically, it is a large, not large, it's a, it's a family entertainment center. It's geared toward kids 0 to 12. There will be a play structure there dedicated only for 4-year-olds to 12-year-olds, and in another dedicated area for toddlers, 1 to 3, and then babies 2 and under. We also will have a small cafe there. We will have, I'm sorry, there'll be a small cafe there, but in order to cook our foods, we would not be using any grease or oils or any fatty oils there. We're going to be having, we're going to be cooking with the self-contained ovens and warming trays, so we want to try to keep it as healthy as possible. As far as safety and security, we're going to have fully staff of employees. Any parent or guardian with their child coming in will require a wristband and also be checked on the way out. So, meaning there is no parent that will drop off, there's not a drop-off facility. So, if you come in, you have to leave with your child, and you stay in there for the full duration. Basically, the summary of it is for kids, for, sorry, for kids to come out and just play with other kids, and just, basically, just, you know, move around, get to know other kids, and hopefully, you know, family members come out, and, you know, other new mothers, new families, to meet other families too, and, you know, that's basically it, yeah.
Anybody have any questions for the applicant?
It's more like a meet and greet, I mean, what do you mean by, what kind of activities do you have there? I was curious, I mean, games, or is it more like gymnastics, or is it like miniature golf like we had across the way, or, I mean, what kind of, I mean...
Inside, it will be a play structure, like with slides and tubes and, you know, climbing, going up, you know, I don't know, just climbing structures in there, and then, in the toddler areas and the baby areas, they're more like soft, soft cushion play, you know, maybe 1 foot high in height, just for, you know, for them just to crawl around and just build muscle, you know, build motor skills for the kids.
Shannon, lovetoplay.com, it has a little video there, it's kind of informative of what, what it's going to look like. Lovetoplay.com is the website. It shows you a video of what locations have. What is the, what's going to be the maximum occupancy of that location? Do we know?
Greg, architect, he can actually... Someone should know.
My name is Greg Stowers, Stowers Associates Architects, project designer for Love to Play. So, as Benick was saying, there's kind of 3 main play areas, which will have structure. So, basically, imagine an indoor park, that's basically a decent analogy of what this would be. There are some party rooms for birthday parties and kind of social events where families could schedule things. And then, the play areas, we worked with the city's plan checker to determine appropriate occupant loads. It's not a daycare, so the daycare occupant load doesn't really apply, but it's not a true assembly either, such as this type of assembly, so we went back and forth in negotiating, and also in looking at the other franchise store locations in other states, and we looked at how they've applied the occupant loads. And so, the occupant load diagram on the drawings reflects all of those conversations.
So, it says 124.
Yes.
I mean, so if you look at the report, it says that the, that they estimate the maximum parking spaces is 22, but they also say they're going to have 10 to 15 employees. So, you think that that would be like, at most, 44 kids, and 10 to 15 employees seems like an awful lot of employees for...
Yeah, the ratio.
The ratios seem off, but, I mean, there's plenty of parking, so...
I mean, it won't be 10 to 15 at one time, I mean, it's, it can be...
Total.
Oh, okay.
So, at any given time, probably 5 to 7 maybe?
Probably, I mean, myself included.
Depending on, depending on when, your maximum, yeah, peak times?
Correct.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Did I hear you say that parents cannot leave their children there alone?
There's no drop-off.
So, even, what is it, it goes up to 12, you said? Age 4?
It's geared up to age 12, and then, anyone older, I mean, they just go in for free. It's basically, you're watching their little brother or sister, they can come in. But the structure itself, it's only, I mean, height-wise, it's only, it's only, should be up to 12 years old, and anyone older than that, just, you know, they usually don't want to jump in a little jumpy house, or...
Yeah.
Not a jumpy house as in air, as in inflatables, but, you know, climbing through a little tunnel and, yeah.
I'm a little biased, I have a two-year-old, so I'm really excited about this.
That's, that's what he's saying, but really Jesse loves going through tunnels.
Parents are free, so that's, that's a good deal.
I don't have a two-year-old, but I have five children and six grandchildren, and I, I want to commend you. I'm glad that you're bringing this, uh, concept to the city of San Carlos. I think it'll be a good project in a lot of ways for the children, the parents, and the community.
You'll have to warn your customers they can't turn right onto Holly. I'm just saying, 22 additional cars turning right onto Holly, better talk to Public Works. All right, uh, any other questions for staff? All right, um, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, roll call, please.
Commissioner Bergman?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bradley?
Yes.
Chair Silverman?
Yes. Is there any discussion among the commission?
None. I'll read the motion. I move that the planning commission approve the requests of Benick Chow for a conditional use permit to operate a large-scale commercial recreation use at 360 Industrial Road, Suite A, based on the findings and for the reasons incorporated in the staff report and is conditioned in a conditional use permit.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, roll call, please.
Commissioner Bergman?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bradley?
Yes.
Chair Silverman?
Yes, congratulations and good luck. All right, um, wow, so now reports, correspondence, and general information are all just one item?
Um, well, in your packet, um, you probably noticed there's a few changes for this evening. Uh, we have, um, implemented a new program under the, um, company name Astella, but the actual program name is MinuteTrack, so we have a new agenda management system and a system whereby we can input our staff reports electronically, and when all is said and done, it's printed out in the format that you have before you tonight. So you'll notice that we, um, uh, maintain, um, individual page numbers on, uh, the individual staff reports, but for the packet as a whole, we have a packet page numbering system as well. And then also on the attachments, what should be printed out kind of vertically on the side of the, the right-hand side of the, of the page is, um, a notation for which documents are identified as attachments. Um, so, um, let us know if there's anything that you see that is a little bit problematic. It's brand new, so if you notice any, um, issues with the way the report is coming out, please let us know, and we'll continue to work on those as we implement this new system. The other thing that I wanted to mention is that in the second staff report for the item that we just heard for Love to Play, you'll note that, um, staff has, um, provided sort of like a one-page summary of the basic information about the project. Um, this is, um, the, the first page of the Love to Play staff report. Um, and so I just wanted to, um, ask the commission, you know, sort of what they thought about it. I mean, you don't have to give me your comments, um, tonight, but what we wanted to do is provide kind of like a, a summary of, of the main kind of project descriptors that you usually find. Normally, we'll write these out in sentences, sometimes paragraphs, um, but this is something that we think is really kind of a little bit more straightforward, less writing, less things to read, but still contains all the necessary information about the project. So I just wanted to point that out, and, um, we would welcome any feedback you may have. If you want to call or shoot me an email and let me know what you think, if that's easy to read, um, but it's something new, so we, I just wanted to point it out, and we're gonna, um, you, going forward, we're going to be using this format for our staff reports. We find it to be efficient for ourselves, but, you know, the planning commission is the one that reads the staff report, and we want to make sure that the, uh, information is conveyed in a way that really works for the commission. So, uh, having said that, um, let us know your thoughts.
Quick question for you. When do they think, what's the ETA on getting all the past meetings on the new site?
I don't know the answer to that, but I can certainly find out and let you know at the next planning commission meeting.
Kind of flipped out a little bit, thinking, oh, they lost all, and then I read a little small line that says we're working on transitioning the old information.
I know, there's...
Is it?
Is it today? Okay. The recording didn't pick that up, it is, it should be working as of today, but if you see something that's not, just feel free to let us know.
Excellent. So when you say what's new, you're, is it this, is it the, this part?
Yes, it's kind of like a table. In this instance, it leads over to the next page, um, but...
It's kind of like a dashboard of key, you know, sort of, uh, key metrics, and I like it.
Great.
Yeah, I like it, I like the format, too.
I mean, it's not additional work, I mean, it's, it's got useful information, including information that we didn't previously have, um, at our fingertips, like, um, the previous use, that's interesting.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Yeah, so it's a nice little dashboard.
Great, good, and, you know, it's something that we're always improving, so we'll continue to build upon that as we need, but thanks, that's what we're hoping for. We wanted to make it easier for everyone, um, but still be meaningful. Um, the only other update that I have for this evening is just that our next meeting is set for October the 2nd, and we have two items on the agenda, one of which will be, um, a recommendation, uh, to consider amendments to the zoning ordinance to accommodate cannabis business-oriented uses, um, in addition to the second item on the agenda, which will be a general plan, um, or zoning map, sort of correction to the zoning map, and, um, the report will be fairly straightforward and explain that as well, what, as far as what we need to correct, and give some history about that as well. Um, and that would be it for October 2nd. And that's all I have for this evening.
Um, any, uh, commissioner reports?
Got a report. Uh, question for staff, Lisa, is the, um, single-family density study committee meeting again this month, do you know?
Thank you, that is actually a great, uh, opportunity for me to give you an update, which I probably should have, but there's too many things in my mind, it seems. So the Single Family House Committee, otherwise known as the SHAC, is a seven-member committee that has been working with the city to look at development standards for single-family homes. We've met, um, about four times with them, um, and our next meeting is set for Thursday, October the 5th at 6 o'clock? Do we meet at 6:00 or 6:30? I'm sorry, I can't remember at the moment. I think it's 6:00 PM, 6:00 PM, um, 6:00 PM in the Enterprise Room, which is located on the second floor of City Hall next to Public Works.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, you know, I like, uh, I like it when you give a brief report on city council actions that relate to, um, planning stuff, and it's not, it's not something listed on the agenda, and there may not have been anything, but if there could be a way to continue to do that, I think that's nice.
Certainly, yes, and, and usually I'll confer with Al. I'm not always in attendance at every city council meeting, but things that are, you know, germane to the planning commission, we do our best to make sure the planning commission is informed. And along those lines, one of the things that I can share with you, um, is on October the 9th, the city council will be doing a study session on daycare. I don't know if it came to the planning commission's, um, attention, but several members in the community, um, both parents and, um, daycare providers, um, approached the city council. I can't remember exactly what meeting it was, but I want to say at least two to three months ago, and expressed concern about, um, the, uh, lack of, um, opportunities to open up new daycare facilities, and I guess it's a, an issue throughout, um, the region, but looking specifically at San Carlos, they asked the council to consider what they might be able to do to make it easier to open up a large family daycare at your private home or a commercial daycare, um, business, um, within the permitted zones within the city. So on October 9th, um, a, um, the consultant who was hired to kind of look at these is going to be, um, offering up some ideas, not really offering up, but, you know, providing the council with a summary of options that they can consider, and so we expect the council to consider those and possibly provide some direction to staff, which could ultimately lead to a modification of the zoning ordinance as it pertains to large family daycare or daycare uses within the city. So that is something that we are looking at, and it's, um, being led by the city's Economic Development Division. They're the lead, but of course, they're working with planning. So the first step is to have a study session, so that'll be at council on October 9th.
I'm assuming that, uh, that the consultant or the city council is already aware of this, but, I mean, that's a core focus of the first five commission in San Mateo County, um, which is a ma, made up of, uh, a number of stakeholders. Hopefully, they, you know, their, their knowledge and, and background is, is being taken advantage of. Yeah. Um, all right, anything else?
Nope.
All right, uh, then the meeting is adjourned.